I call this meeting to order. Can we please stand and rise? Do you pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So the two things that we have on the document for this evening are now being pushed, the zoning ordinance variants. So everything is being pushed to May 30th at 6:00 PM, where it will be presented and we will be able to have a form and discuss openly. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second that. Fantastic, so we are adjourned.
This time I'm going to call our meeting to order. If you, let's see, I'm going to ask Cassie if she would lead us in the invocation. Please, Cass.
Please bow your heads. Dear my Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for all that you have blessed us with. Please, Father, come before us tonight. Help us to have our ears open, Lord, and to hear what you have us to say. We love you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And would you please rise and I will ask Tom to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Please proceed. This time, I would like to entertain the motion that we adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, like, sign carry. Have you all had a chance? The minutes are on the back of the first page. Hopefully, you've all looked at, looked the minutes over. If not, take a moment. Otherwise, I will ask Laura H. to motion to accept the minutes from our January 25th meeting. Do I hear a motion?
A motion.
Having a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Those in favor signify my, say aye, please.
Aye.
Carry. Thank you. Under new business, we have item number one, public hearing for consideration of request for a variance from Section 94-16 Lot and Building Regulations of the City of Jasper zoning ordinance. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mary.
Good evening, Council Commissioners. Mary Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. In front of you, I have a variance request. It's considered a blanket variance for the Pinnacle Townhomes. We recently found out when we were permitting Phase Two that Phase One was built at the wrong setbacks. They were built at a C2 setback, which is 20 feet, when they should have been built at a 25 foot. Because the plat has been recorded, they do have a vested right to build the remainder of the housing lots at 20. And so, in order to prevent the residents who live there now and our future residents from having to come get a variance every time they want to add a deck, add a stair, or anything like that, we are requesting the blanket variance in order to resolve this issue.
And your recommendation is?
Is to approve.
Alright. Do I hear any discussion? Any further considerations here?
Just have a question. So it was approved with the 20-foot setback and then?
So when it was rezoned, it was rezoned to R3. So it was approved with an R3 setback. However, when the plat was being approved, it was approved with a 20-foot setback. So there was an error made.
Okay.
Got it.
Any discussion? Anything from the floor, from the public at this time? Any comments or questions or concerns? If not, may I have a motion that we either approve or disapprove this variance?
I'll move, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve this variance. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you for that. We'll move to item number two, public hearing to discuss proposed text amendments to City of Jasper zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and zoning map. Then again, the floor is yours. Mary?
Alright, so as you are aware, they have been, or the city has been working on updating the zoning ordinance. And also, this is coinciding with the moratorium for annexation and any residential rezoning as well. So we've gotten to the point where we believe it is time to adopt what has, what the changes that have been made. So planning commission is the first stop for that. We do have our consultant here, Tanya Leva.
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 Hello.
From CPL. And she will be going over that in a PowerPoint as soon as I can get the PowerPoint loaded in. So, but you also have, in front of you, you do have this. Because you know, fun and out.
They always seem to break out.
Yep. Exactly. Hold on just one second. So Tanya, I do have you set up over here.
Thank you so much for your patience and good evening. My name is Tanya Sella-Leva. I work with Clark Patterson Lee, I'm a senior planner there. I assisted with the record keeper, who's my supervisor, and Miss Mary, to make some text amendments, starting in March when I came to the process. But this process for these revisions has been going on for a time. The purpose of these updates, as you all may remember, CPL helped with an ordinance rewrite. 2021 was adopted. We were asked to come back and provide some assistance, post-adoption assistance to kind of tweak and integrate some changes that have been made recently into the code that you guys currently have. This conversation started by some requests for us to assist in providing more criteria to assist decision-makers when it came to annexation decisions. And also, to just revisit the current growth trends that are being observed in different residential districts. See that they're still doing what your comprehensive plan and what your community envisions for those areas. So that's how this started. As the process continued, we also kept our ear and eyes on state legislation. There has been changes to the zoning procedures law at the state level that affects timelines, that affects the way we advertise certain types of procedures. And it also changes the terminology of certain things that we have historically used. For example, conditional uses. Now there's stronger footing, rather than be called special uses because they're more in line with the legislative process instead of a quasi-judicial process. So there's just a legal framework shift and rethinking of certain zoning processes at the state level. And so, part of what we did was also integrate those changes to make sure you guys are still in compliance with state laws. We've also added some new graphics, some clarified some language that once put in practice, we realized it might have been a little confusing. So we cleaned that up, added some clarity on design standards, and integrated mixed-use ratios, other updates as the team that was here, heading that advised us to make. So pretty holistic overview of the purpose of the updates. So I've kind of just touched base on these, but these are the summary of the key changes that we think are big takeaways that we need to fly for you. So we've set requirements for the type of people who can prepare your drawings as part of the permitting process. We've adjusted downtown design standards in response to staff requests, made adjustments to the requirements, required covenants for places that have private infrastructure. We've set criteria for when to request a traffic impact analysis because those can be costly. So we wanted to have it documented and transparent. These are the things that will trigger the meeting once, so just get ready. We've updated those timelines, we're doing procedure laws, as we mentioned, for your residential districts. We've also taken a look at uses. We've limited R2 and R3 districts to single-family detached uses and created two new zoning districts specifically for attached products. So we'll get into that in a little bit. The intent of this is to really make it clear if you're annexing and you want to be using, if you're requesting to be annexed into the city in order to build an attached product. And we want to make it easier for you and have a zoning district specific for that use there for you to request. Instead of kind of muddying the waters of the district that allows different types, but is tailored for lower density development as a whole. So we've, those are pretty big changes that have occurred since I've come aboard. We've also tweaked your PUD, your Planned Unit Development District Requirements. We want to make sure that you're getting mixed-use development, that they're not just being used for residential products. So we've integrated some standards for developers to follow and the type of applications when they file them. We were requesting that they integrate a specific number of non-residential uses and that type of use that they can integrate into the application will vary in the total size of their project. We've also added several institutional and healthcare-related uses to your use table, just to keep you guys flexible. We made some central business district adjustments as well. In terms of the higher-level stuff, we've also streamlined your code to create tables that are codified more of your criteria all at one glance so that it's easier for you to get the information that you need as, you know, just by pulling up one document as they're sitting through it. So we've added different criteria here. For example, your minimum lot furniture now have been increased to 100 feet. The aim of that increase is to try to create more rectangular lots in order that you might start to lay the foundation for creating street grids in different districts. You've increased, we haven't increased, but we coalesced all your setbacks into one column, just for ease of use. Those that are in red were just carried over from pre-existing columns. And then we've created a maximum density column for you to clarify exactly what intensity of development you want to see in that district. And we've also added impervious surface ratios to clarify, hey, we still need some grass to exonerate our runoff. Kind of controls for that. So this is what your new table looks like. This is just introducing also the two new districts that we talked about, those standards, the high-level standards, what those look like. In terms of all your other pre-existing districts, we kept as much as we could in there. So we just added two, rather than really take away, to the standards in place today. So I know you guys have a draft, or I'm hoping you have a draft of the red line, Chapter 94, which is your zoning code, and the Chapter 95, which is your sign code. And I went through the document line by line. Every red line change you see, we documented here and explained the reason for it. So it's all in the table here of why each change was made and the purpose. We made approximately 130 changes to both documents collectively. And I'm happy to, you know, pull any one of these out and discuss them in more detail, as you guys would like. So we could go one by one, or I could pause here and just take questions for any particular red lines you may have an interest in. Do we have a preference?
No, just I think whatever you feel comfortable doing would be fine.
Alright. Sounds good. So I guess if you pull up the documents side by side, the section, code section will be, you know, where you can find the change in the language. So this is where I'm going to have to close over here. So we're starting Article One at the Purpose and Attention sections. We relocated your, the top of that item from a health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the city. We moved that up in order to, that's where police powers and zoning authority comes from. And that's really why we do what we do. So we rose that to the top because that's really the source of the authority of this document. The next red line that came after that is we just kind of shifted things around for formatting to make things cleaner to find. For Section 94D, we, there was something that says the code takes effect on a specific date. We removed that date, just as upon adoption or to keep you guys flexible in case of future updates so you don't come to conflict with yourselves. Section 94.3B, you now require professional seals by engineers or architects to, on the documents that are submitted to you for review. That's just the best practice of making sure those professionals are being the ones that are hired to prepare those documents. 94.3B7, we now require that all private roads be built to GDOT standards. So we want public roads and private roads to be up to the same caliber. Section 94.3B11, we want all utility systems shown on your drawings. That's just so we can ensure that they're in the proper place to prevent maintenance issues down the line and that they're accessible with appropriate easements and such. Section 94.3B, stormwater plans. And we also cross-reference chapters. So you have certain chapters like an alcohol ordinance and a few other like environmental standards that are outside of your zoning code specific, but we want to make clear to developers and the general public, these apply to, that's part of this process as well. Section 94.3C, again with the seals, just quality control there and safety. Section 94.3E, we are just cleaning up our administration procedure there. It is saying, no reimbursements of fees that you incur during the permitting process unless it's a clerical error because those fees go towards covering the plan review costs the city needs to do. Section 94.15, so again, residential district two and three are now single-family detached product only. And we've introduced those new attached product districts and multifamily districts to the districts table along with all those standards we discussed. Section Table 94.16, this is that table I showed you earlier. We just added all those columns I mentioned and added extra standards to clarify stormwater runoff mitigation controls and such. Section 94.16D, we added, this is for townhome requirements. We said townhomes can, we don't want more than four units per grouping. And we want those things at least 20 feet apart, just for fire safety. 94.16E, we moved GR6 and we refer users to the table that we spent time creating. 94.16F, we say that 35% of project floor area must be set aside for non-residential uses in the central business district. This is for economic development. This is to push and make use vision and to reactivize your central business district. We want more than just residential uses to be coming on board with projects wherever feasible. Section 94.24G, et cetera, residential projects must bring in a non-residential use. So there's that again. Section 94.25, we add open space standards to, that are applicable to other existing districts to the PUD. That should have already been in there, we've just cleaned that up. 94.34A, so we described the boundary of your overlay. That's going to be on your maps, but you always want a backup location just in case for whatever reason you can't find your maps. Section, or really, this is throughout the whole document. We changed that language to reflect zoning procedures laws. Instead of conditional use, you'll now see special use all over. Some people will not be coming to you and request special use permits, not conditional ones. Section 94.50, we updated your use table. So now the term P means prohibited, not permitted. The term A means allowed. And S refers to the special use permit. That will be required whenever flagged. Section 94.51, we added controls to the accessory structure section to make sure that they remain subordinate to primary uses. So we're pretty clear, you know, they need to be safe if you're going to request a business license for that use. They, they need to really be there for property owners' use. Section 94.66, wait, hold on, I skipped one.
94.50, yeah.
Thank you. Suites not detached for single-family attached district. Attached products, they're going to be plotted usually in such a way that a detached accessory structure is not really feasible or can be comfortably accommodated in the same way that on a detached lot. So we're saying if you have like a granny suite over a garage, those are fine, but the other allowances don't apply to you. Probably because that would cause issues with the way they're normally plotted. Section 94.66, we replaced the term senior living with active adult just to be able to match what the market's actually using in terms of those terminologies and materials. Keep that consistent off the board. This is, you know, just a really great, also helps us to clarify that unlike senior uses, which are regulated by the state level by different documents, active adult living is really a district that's intended to promote universal design and just good practice. So it's not necessarily senior living the same way that people think of when they think of like a memory-assisted facility or things like that. It is, you know, just more traditional development along with more traditional development, but more higher material for universal features that will allow a wage and place over time. 94.68, we carried over the wine shot use that you have already adopted in your alcohol ordinance over to your zoning use table. This is just to keep consistency and also to market that that's a business people can pursue. Table 94.92, so we set up a distance from property lines for certain encroachments. So we say for certain features, for example, I think silver roofs is one of them, you have to keep everything at least five feet away from the property lines just to prevent code enforcement issues down the line or neighbor conflicts. 94.96B, we set architectural standards and set a maximum threshold for the use of metal siding materials as an accent. And we also clarify what kinds of metal materials would be acceptable as an architectural accent. Really, the items that are in that section are products that have been shown and recommended to be durable products that aren't going to look terrible, you know, for a very, very long time, if ever. And really to support the more, the blend of materials that qualifies good architecture. See, 94, 96, 97, we just carried that down, the metal maximums down to your downtown architectures as well. And for your downtown architectures, we add some graphics and clarify the type of traditional features that are in the state of Georgia you see in historic districts. And we make those now requirements for new criteria, new construction map. Okay, we're almost halfway through. Any questions so far? Okay, great. Section 94.11, we make it okay for lots that are below wood. Will we now allow for minimum thresholds, minimum acreage for new lot creation? Oh, okay. So, sorry, I'm confused. So we're allowing people to plot out and subdivide out pieces of like a half open space amenities or stormwater detention ponds and features so that it can be plotted to be kept in conservation easements or other long-term arrangements there. And we do require HOA covenants to be pretty much maintained in perpetuity in order to maintain those private infrastructure features. Section 94.1113, we require that structures, principally residential structures, be on a permanent foundation in order to receive sewer and water utility service. And we require individual meters for these utilities. We added that at staff direction. 94.18F, we are, we tweaked the driveway width and depth requirements to ensure pedestrian safety and to mitigate the risk that cars backing out of driveways, muddied people. So we're requiring that they have more space so that they can actually catch themselves and also prevent like truck ends and large vehicles from overhanging onto your public roads. So that was just a tweaking your design series. Section 94.119, we added a guest parking requirement for the multifamily district. So we do allow shared parking. We don't want to overpark places. But we do require that you provide guest parking. So minimum .5 per unit provided there. And that's in addition to the basic residential parking that would be required for that project. Table 94.121C, we require that the number of access points into a community or a project be based on the total square footage being constructed instead of the total number of parking spaces that is required for that project. I think this came out of a conversation when we were discussing industrial projects and industrial buildings. Those tend to be really big square footages, but they don't necessarily need a lot of parking. So how do you ensure secure access that separates freight and, you know, passenger vehicles from that? You provide sufficient access. So we tweaked how we require that number to be clarified. Section 94.122, again, we require that properties coming in, developers be aware if you're annexing in, your roads have to be built to GDOT standards, whether public or private. 94.125, we add criteria for traffic impact analysis. Section 94.132, we clarify how your landscaping zone under your streetscapes in downtown and in new developments will need to be measured. This is to make sure you're getting the appropriate width so that your trees survive there. So now we clarify that to be measured from the back of the car, not the front of it. That's at least a two-foot difference usually. Section 94.133, we clarify what types of parts of your property and your project can count towards open spaces. So when we set our open space minimums, we want to make sure we're not just getting the less leftover parts or the little segments between units. We want to make sure you thought it out and try to give us as much usable space for your community to benefit from as possible. So this is attempted a quality of life improvement issue and also to ensure that we get swath supply that are carefully considered, not just piecemeal parts. Section 94.139, we require buffers where there are unliked uses. This is to protect privacy, mitigate code enforcement issues, noise, spill of light, those kind of things. Section 94, I think we also added standards on buffer design for you. Some new graphics there. Section 94.157, we require dumpster coverings, oil separators, and grease interceptors when you're thinking about like restaurant-type uses. This helps also control runoff. When it rains, you don't want all that trash liquid falling out into your roads. And just to also help maintain your sewer infrastructure healthy for the longer term with those. Section 94.169, we increased the duration of the maintenance warranty for 24 to 36 months. This is at staff direction. Table 94.187, we clarified criteria, or we added criteria to help decision-makers in the annexation process. So you now have a section you can pull to and go on my line to see this is best practices for annexation considerations. Section 94.206, we update the timeframe for mailing letters. This is in line with the zoning procedures law. So I think it's now shifted to 15 and 30 days. No less than 15, no more than 30. Section 94.208, we changed the term public hearing for planning commission to public meetings. Stay law that only requires one public hearing and we feel it would reduce liability if we just held that at the city council session. So these meetings will still be held, they'll just be called meeting. And I think Carrie can provide more information on that, or I can as well. Section 94.225, we outline our advertising requirements for administrative variances, just to keep things consistent in terms of procedure. Section 94.238, we added references to the annexation sections. We just codified the existing powers that the city has. And we updated the timelines that I mentioned. Section 94.246, we replaced conditional with special. Added criteria, as I said. Section 94.272, et cetera. We added timelines for appeals. We clarified zoning official authority in the appeals process. And then we updated definitions. Alright, we're at the last one. So here, this is actually mostly your zoning code. So we've covered all the zoning changes. We are now on the sign code, so we're now in, this is Chapter 95. So the first major change we made in the sign code is that we changed the dimensions to allow larger signs along Highway 515. For, we recognize that's a more omicentric space and we just want to make sure that economic development purposes and unit businesses can reach their target audiences. So we allow larger signs. But we also made allowances to, for example, corner lots. You can increase the, you're allowed two signs if you have two front. You can increase the, you're allowed to sign if you have two frontages because the number of signs you can have is based on the frontages you have. What we're saying, well, if you increase, if you do away with one of your signs, if you forfeit one of your signs, we'll give you a density, we'll give you a sign area bonus of 30%. So, you can make one sign bigger if you forfeit one. That's trying to prevent the proliferation of too many signs. Section 95.22B, we require that if monument signs are taller than 10 feet, they need to be set back X amount of distance from the right-of-way. This is just to, I think, 15 feet if they're above 10 feet. This is to make sure that we preserve wide of sight and that people aren't having obstructions to their vision when they're trying to get on the road. Section 94.22, we clarified sign monument materials that are desirable and that are more durable. We clarified it has to be a compatible color palette to the primary development, preferably neutral colors. And we just clarified the dimensional requirements for those sign types. 94, that should be 95. 95.28, we established a minimum letter size and numeral size between 5 to 9 inches so that those addresses that are now required to be on monument signs are easy to spot by emergency service providers from a distance. Table 95.29, we added a cross-reference there to the new monument sign requirements for ease of use. And then finally, we updated the monument sign definition. So, what we did is, we took out all regulatory language, we just added that definition, and we just put it in the code where all the other regulations are. That way, you're not having to shift back and forth trying to find those. They're all in the one central area. So, that's the bulk of it. That's actually most of it, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sure, I just had a question about, you mentioned the change from PC, the planning commission hearings to meetings. So, functionally, what will change with what we're doing?
My understanding, so, my understanding is that a meeting is, they have different advertisement requirements, so the state doesn't require that those necessarily be advertised, but they still can.
Yeah.
So, functionally, I don't think anything has to change. You're just, if you become a meeting, you no longer have to worry about, you know, accidentally missing a deadline in your legal advertisement stuff because technically that, the one that will be held to meeting those will be the one at the council.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And one more thing, your recommendation is still required. So, even though they've reduced the number of public hearings to one required, your recommendation to the council is still required.
I had a quick question on Section 94.16E, remove D6. Use this now refer to the table. I was just wondering, it just says clarify or clarity. I know we just had our first VR6, like over there by the chamber. It's in the process of being held, so I just didn't know if there was, like, the major changes with that. Sorry, I have.
No, it's like the second page, it's up there.
Yeah, and Section 95-16E, it's on the third one, halfway down. Yeah, you have removed ER6, now refer to the table. So, is it just completely, now it's not allowed? Or it's just changed?
I think they took it out of the body and put it on the table, right?
Okay, so it's still available and an option.
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry.
It was just moved out of where it was because it wasn't being utilized the way it was supposed to properly be utilized. They were in the use table, so it would be utilized more.
Okay, perfect.
That's what I always wanted to know.
Diane, do you have?
Other questions or comments? Todd, we certainly appreciate you presenting this to us. You should get a glass of water or... Do I hear a motion or, once again, anything else to be added to this?
And through the chair, if you don't mind. So, as part of the public hearing process, you know we have to also publish what we're going to be having our public hearing on. So, we did publish the document as it is. And since we've been going over a couple of items, have come to our attention that we're not on the previously published edition. So, if you were to make a recommendation, I do have three items that I'd like you to add to the said recommendation. One being Section 94.96C, for a 10% max for metal accent currently only applies to residential standards. We need to edit the commercial standards as well. Section 94.113D, striking out or curtain wall construct because this is the last skill feature, which we do not, and so we want to keep with the masonry. And then, the table at 94.16 on our new district for multi-family residential, we accidentally prohibited multi-family residential and multifamily residential. So, it's that carryover from turning that P from prohibited to permitted. So, and if you would like to, you can just use my word as the emotion if you'd like. Or reference it.
We have to approve with the reference changes.
I have a motion that we approve with the reference changes. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Carrie? Thank you to each of y'all. Do we have anything else to be brought up at this time? I don't think so. So, I would like to entertain a motion that we adjourn. So, move, I have a second, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Motion in second that we adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, bid, thank you.